Thank you, everybody. I'd like to call our meeting back to order. I would also like to say to all the presenters tonight, it's a job well done. Very good. This point of our agenda has been scheduled for question and answer time from board members, and Ms. Kathleen Harnish-Ducey is going to facilitate this section of the agenda for us, so welcome.
Great, thank you, Mr. Gilmore. What we'd like to do is suggest the following kind of process, and that is, first and foremost, as questions come from the board, we'd encourage any member of the task force to answer that question. So we really would like to get additional input beyond presenters, and certainly welcome presenters as well. So if you have information or a story to tell, or you can recall something in one of our meetings that you could use to answer the question, we would ask that you do that. Second, we'll take more than one person, if you'd like, to speak to a question. We welcome two to three people to do that. And finally, we'd ask that you come to the mic up here to answer the question. We've got a number of folks that we hope will be watching this meeting in its taped format, and for their benefit, they'll be able to hear your responses. So with that, Mr. Gilmore, over to you for questions.
Oh, I'm sure there are no questions. Board members, if you'll just speak up, anyone who has something they'd like to start with? Mr. Churchman, you're looking my direction, so why don't you begin?
Okay, the first thing I want to say is I want to talk to the task force, and I want to compliment you. Just a tremendous amount of work that's been done here. And as you sit back now and watch this process unfold, take heart in knowing that you helped shape the footprint and how this bond looks going forward, and I think that you should be commended for that. I sit here in awe, and I look at the books and the reports, and I just know that you've struggled with a lot of things, and so I just want to extend my heartfelt commendation to all the work that you've done here. I look at the fact that Olathe has exceeded the national average and the state average in academics, and that's a good thing. And I look also at the fact, as we discussed on the board, good to great and things of that nature, that you can never stand still, and we need to keep being innovative and moving forward. I look at the fact that certainly equity is an absolute priority. Some of the highest scores we have in this district come from some of our oldest schools. And so in my mind, old is not a bad thing, but lack of equity certainly is something that we don't want to have, so we do want to strive for that equity. And so once again, I thank you for all your work that you've done. I think that we have to certainly balance affordability versus the academic achievement that we'll get as a result. One of the questions that I have initially, as I look through the package, I see a reference to academic achievement with national merit scholars. And as I look at our balanced scorecard, I don't see that as an attribute. So I'd just like to get a higher understanding as to how that figures in with some of the thought processes that went, the task force went through.
Okay. So somebody from the task force, maybe even, oh, academic excellence. Terrific, thank you.
I'm Kathleen Wilheim, I'm Frontier Trail Junior High. You speak to my heart there, national merit. My son was a finalist when he was in 4th grade, it's a little tacky, but I'll tell the story anyway. When he was in 4th grade, for breakfast, I served him the cutout of the newspaper, the list of the finalists at that particular year, and said, "I think you should do this." And he did. But he had my pushing all along, and he had excellent teachers. I've been working with Kathy Smith at Olathe South to prepare kids for national merit, and we've been very successful. But it is not a process that you can add on during the summer or add on to the day. It has to be through the rigor in the classroom. And I think the way we address that is 9th grade at the high school, so that we have that vertical alignment. The kids are there, they see their future, and they hear on the announcements, kids prepping for college, prepping for the PSAT, SAT, et cetera. And I think that's a big way that we can support our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Anybody else want to add anything to that? Great, thanks, Jane.
I'm Jane Viall-Walt, and I have a son who graduated from Olathe East, I think it was 2002. But he did the, well, he skipped pre-algebra. In 6th grade, he went up and he took algebra at the junior high. And there wasn't transportation, I provided that. In 8th grade, he went to the high school, and he took math at the high school in 8th grade and 9th grade. There are options for our children, but they are very difficult. He did miss class time, and it's not for every kid, because there's kids out there that don't have that drive. He did. My other children have not done this. Lots of other children haven't done this. It would be so much more equitable for all children if they had these things that they could get to. His scores were extremely high. He's almost a perfect ACT. All of these things because he was able to reach these classes at a much younger age than most of our contemporary children of his age. His AP scores were fives. He took 42 hours of As to college with him from AP scores, because he was able to accelerate his classes in the Olathe district. It was difficult, and we did a lot of things to get it done. The school district was wonderful in helping us, but not everyone has a mom who stays home all the time, or a child that's self-driven. And I think we need to offer these opportunities to all of our children, because it does make it more competitive as far as scholarships and everything else, because they're being compared to all the rest of these school districts all across the United States. When I first moved to Olathe, I loved the fact that our 6th graders went the elementary, and our 9th graders were in the junior high. I wanted my children to stay young as long as possible. I did not want them mixed with those older, rough children. But I can tell you now, as an experienced parent, that we need our 6th graders in our junior high, and we need our 9th graders in the high school. That's one way that we can face them, being able to compete for not only scholarships, but to get into schools they want to get into, to get into programs that they need to get into. Thank you.
I have a-
Thank you, Jane.
Go ahead.
Yes.
A question that will maybe, would maybe follow that, in our 21st century programs, moving our 9th graders to the high school, plans for those 21st century programs, what would that look like? I know there's certainly been some consideration for that, because those programs have been so successful.
Great. Somebody from the bond task force, maybe even academic excellence subcommittee again, like to address that question, impact on 21st century curriculum? Yes.
I can-
And then Bernie will take you second, how's that? Great.
My name is Ann Sanders, I'm Director of Senior High Education, and I'm pleased to be able to answer this question. And the 21st century programs, number one, as evidence from the 3,000 parents have said that they want the 21st century concepts to be in all aspects of our curriculum and all levels. So for the current programs that exist, the 21st century steering committee has talked about, what would that need to look like? And at the very first meeting of our program facilitators, we began to speak to that, because in some of our programs, as we began to design them, at the very beginning, we were constrained because we had the three years. It would be better, some of our students are having to make some very difficult decisions. Some of our students are having to take courses in the summer, and that's why our advanced placement in physical education has increased in the summer, the enrollments, is because we have to free up a place in their schedule for these block within a block classes. And what that is, a block within a block classes, or classes that meet two to three hours of a day. And so what, having the 9th grade, it would give, up in the high school, would give an opportunity to spread that over four years rather than three years to get an endorsement. Thank you.
Dr. Sanders, if I could just build on that with one question, and a lot of my questions tonight will go back to our balanced scorecard, which I know is a works in progress, and it's a great tool, but it's really just to understand. We show our target for advanced placement classes at around 30% of our total student population, and we're roughly at 28%, according to latest figures. What is the estimate for the number of students, or the percentage of students, that will move into those kinds of classes if we do indeed move forward with this change? Or do we have that kind of a forecast?
Well, if you're looking at the 28%, that does include the 9th grade pre-AP classes, but if you notice that at the 9th grade, the courses that are offered at pre-AP are primarily just language arts, and then there are some students that are in biology, but they're not called pre-AP. So what that would allow is that the 9th grade students would be able to access, and we've heard some of these parents who said that, because they have the opportunity and have had the luxury of being able to take their students there, it is not, I always say equity in access. And it's not, and so what this would do is would increase it, and I would think that our enrollments in advanced placement classes would increase.
Do we have any feel or any kind of estimate as to what that would be?
I cannot say, but I would say that if we look at our other benchmark districts and compare ourselves to those students and the enrollments that are 912, I'd say that if we're at, and putting a target at 30%, and I know that Jinks, Oklahoma, has something like 30, 35%, you know, Cherry Creek, some Adley Stevenson, they have a higher rating than that. Somewhere even at, in Adley Stevenson, of almost 50% of their kids have taken at least one advanced placement class or higher.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Sanders, in the materials that we received and in the comments that were made tonight, there was reference made to AP scholars. Could you please describe what that means? Because there's a noticeable gap between our neighboring districts and where Olathe is. So would you define what is referred to as an AP scholar in our materials?
There are several different distinctions of AP scholars. First, there is the AP scholar, and an AP scholar is a person who has taken at least three advanced placement classes and has scored at least a three or better. And then, an AP scholar with distinction has taken at least four AP tests and have scored at least a 3.5 as an average. And then, an AP scholar with honors and distinction has taken four or more and have scored as an average of four or better on their, all of the tests that they have taken. And we do have some students who have done that.
So in the materials that we have, when it refers to an AP scholar, then we're talking about students who have taken at least three AP classes and have scored, do they have to score three on each test, or an average of three on the test?
A three or better on all of the tests, and that average, but at least an average of three. And at least three on an individual basis.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Sanders. Bernie, did you want to add anything as well?
I wanted to just add a comment, as a parent who was involved in the 21st century program at Olathe South last year, I worked on the team with Jerry Towesley as a parent. My son was one of the three charter members for the 21st century program there. And I know that in some of those meetings I was a participant in, and in a lot of the planning meetings, it was difficult to, one of the challenges was getting the counselors from 9th grade on board, and really understanding what was needed in order to have those students ready. And it's a big catch-up game as they get to 10th grade in high school, to try to get them ready for that wonderful program. It's very academically stimulating and challenging, and I'd like to see that advantage for those students to be able to start as 9th grade.
Thank you, Bernie. Other questions? I'm sorry.
I'm going to go back, because I'd ask a question and do what other board members are doing, and that is to recognize that task force, you've done an unbelievable job. I spent about six hours in this notebook, and my work has just begun, I can tell from after your presentation. So first of all, thank you for the efforts of all of you. In a piece of information that was there, was our 6th grade students spend approximately 170 minutes of reading time during that 6th grade period. That moves to 50 minutes, according to what I'm reading, in a reading block when they move to the junior high. I'm probably not understanding totally, because I noticed at the end of a typical period or a typical day that was given, there's also, at the end of the day, some opportunities for extensions, of academic extensions is what it's called. I just want to make sure that we're balancing, when we move those students, still looking at meeting those reading and math needs. I'm sure that's probably done very efficiently as they move into that next level, but when I see a difference of 170 minutes to 50 minutes, it may be just a difference of programming. So, question on that difference, if possible.
Can somebody from the task force take that, or I don't know if we'll need staff help on this one? Did you, great.
I'm Kim Gillespie, and I'm principal at Pioneer Trail. And one of the things that is exciting to me as a junior high school principal is seeing that this is not simply moving the program that we have in one place and moving it down a level or up a level, but it gives us an opportunity to create something new, something that is more suited for the future of these students. So I don't think that we would necessarily say that when the 6th graders move to junior high, they're going to look like what the 7th graders do now. I think we have the opportunity and the excitement of creating something new.
Could I ask you then to expand a little bit on that? Because I've had conversations with some parents who have children almost in the 6th grade or approaching that point, and they're a little bit nervous about their kids leaving elementary school and going to junior high, and they're wondering if those 6th graders are just going to be plopped into an atmosphere that is the way the junior high is right now, or if there might be some transitional time, first semester, whatever, or if the entire year is going to look different than it would for the current 7th and 8th graders.
You know, I don't think that I could speak for everyone in what it would look like, but I know that we are always focused on moving the students to that next level. We spend a lot of time in getting those 7th graders, the transition for those 7th graders now. And I think that, you know, it might look a little different, the transition might look a little bit different, but there would be a lot of time spending the transition there.
Okay, thank you. I think Stacy has something to comment on, too.
Hi, I'm Stacy Yerkovich, I'm principal at Prairie Trail Junior High, and was on the academic excellence subcommittee, and then another sub-subcommittee that looked at 6th grade moving. And Linda, just to address some of your concerns, we did a little bit of research, and when we were first discussing the movement of the 6th grade, as to what the programs look like in other areas, what 6th grade curriculum looks like. The information you were provided is simply a sketch of what exists now in the 6th grade and what could look like, you know, if we move 6th grade to the junior high. In addition to a 50-minute language arts period, which, as Kim talked about, would simply be just moving 6th grade into a 7th grade model, there are reading electives that would support the reading portion, and there are a variety of electives already in place at the junior high. And as Kim indicated, we would look at 6th grade and what their needs are. The discussion has been that if that model were approved, there's a lot of work to be done as to best practices in other places, not only in our area, in our county, but also across the United States in those benchmark districts. And as Jim, or as Kim indicated, at junior high principals' meetings, we've talked about what an opportunity it would be to create a program in Olathe that is best for kids. And that might include a different configuration within the school day, where you have an eight-period day, which would allow us to separate the language arts and the reading and writing, and actually extend the numbers of minutes. So what was provided in the notebook is what we have at this point, but there certainly has been an emphasis and a focus in not going back or not losing things for 6th grade, especially instructionally in the areas of reading and math that, of course, are state assessed.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
I'd like to address that, too. I recall several discussions we had during those meetings regarding that we had volumes of data from other districts that have done this, and that we had, we were thinking, obviously, a three-year timeframe to prepare. I mean, it's not like we have to convert and do this tomorrow. So we have plenty of time for our staff to look at all the data and get input from the building leadership teams and come up with the right programs for these moves.
Thank you.
Hi.
Okay.
I have a comment and then a question. First of all, I would like to second the comments of my fellow board members in a word of appreciation for all of the hard work and time, and I know nobody did it for the big bucks. Did it because you want to serve the community and serve the children and participate in the process, the decision-making process, that would serve the best interests of our community and the best interest of our children for the long term. So I appreciate that very much, and I appreciate all the hard work and the input that was done in this. And been a lot of wonderful things said this evening, that what we just recently spoke in here was that we're, Kim stated, we're creating exciting and creative opportunities for our students. But when I sit up here, and I got butterflies in my stomach right now, because we're talking about change, big change. And I'm a student of history, and I read a lot, I read a lot of books, and I'm reading a book right now called The Founding Fathers. Our Founding Fathers, a Pulitzer Prize book about the revolutionary generation, the decades right after the Revolutionary War, and a period of immense change in our country, and immense change in government, and whether we're going to have a monarch, or whether we're going to have a republic, and whether it's going to be federalist, or whether it's going to be centralized or decentralized government, and a lot of other issues. And it was, it's amazing when you look back at the next 100 years of how the history of our country transpired because of some decisions that were not made by the founding fathers. And so we, here we are, you know, I start asking myself, okay, what does this look like 20 years from now, if based on a decision we make? All that being said, we're talking about change, and during my eight years on this school board, seven plus, I have learned this, people are down on what they are not up on. And we're talking a lot here tonight, so the first thing that I want to say publicly is that this board has not made any decisions, and we're in the decision-making process, and so there's, there's no, nobody has made any decisions, there's no foregone conclusions here. I appreciate the recommendation of the task force and all of the work that is done into this, and that will certainly weigh heavily on our minds, but I want the public to understand that. We have a lot of work to do. When we start talking about 300, I have 300, I told Mike at break, he asked me if I was listening attentively, I said, "Yeah, I have 347 million reasons to listen really closely." And that's the responsibility that we're charged with, you know, from the seven board members, is, you know, we have to ask our citizens to help us in this, and we have to have their commitment and their understanding of the process, and then we also have to educate our community about this. So my question is, and this is probably more for Dr. All and staff, and somewhat to the task force, is, has any consideration been given to how we are going to communicate/educate, bring our community along in this process? I understand a lot of work has been done here, and a lot of research has been done here, but maybe we represent maybe, what, 1/100 of 1% of all the tax-paying citizens and the people who would make, help us, who ultimately are making this decision, are they aware of this? So we have to, and it is incumbent upon us, Dr. All, it is incumbent upon us that we must communicate our vision to the community, and we've got to figure out how to do that, and we just can't, we're not going to do it sitting in this room. And that's something that is a big challenge for us, and I think before we go very far with this, we've got to figure that out. And we need to figure that out in a real big hurry, how we're going to communicate this. And I think, I don't know what that looks like, but that education process is like, we, how many, I've been going to school for a long time, and we've got a big job here. And before we get too far down the road, we need to start that process, or else, if that's our vision, if that becomes our collective vision, it can't be ours, it has to be the community's vision.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Parker. Dr. All, could I, could I send that to the task force first and then come back to you? Would you mind?
I would not mind at all.
Okay, all right. So I think for task force members, because I know we've talked about this and the challenge of this, so Cindy, that would be great if you'd start.
We've talked about this a lot, too, and not so much in our formal meetings, in our quiet meetings with each other going, okay, you know, once we get through this, we hand it over to you. Once you make your decision that we have elected you to make, then we've got a sales job to do. And I think that going through the process of being a part of the task force has created an amazing sense of ownership over the process for us. And we've talked about cadres of volunteers who would go to our school, whether or not we're willing to put our credibility with our fellow parents at our schools on the line by bringing forth informed people to talk to them, by introducing them, saying, you know, this is something that we participated in, we feel strongly about, and we'd like you to listen to. So I think, you know, we have talked about it, we know that this is potentially the biggest bond issue that this school district has ever seen, and I think that you'll find amongst our 90 members quite a few people willing to go out and make the sale.
Thank you, Cindy. Somebody else, because I know there, as Cindy said, there's been a lot of conversation on this, even if it wasn't formally, somebody else. Bernie, that would be great, or Pam, I mean, Pam, that'd be great.
Well, one of the subcommittee, you know, sub-subcommittee things that I did, is I was part of the integration team where we were pulling together the report, and this specific topic came up in one of those meetings. And what we talked about during that meeting was the need to get the whole bond task force involved, and perhaps have town meetings. We got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people involved in focus groups as part of this bond task force. Couldn't we get those same people and even more to their schools for town meetings? And couldn't we get two or three of us in every single one of those meetings, you know, talking about the data, talking about the importance? So that's kind of the informal vision we had during one of these meetings.
If I could interject on that, and I do thank Mr. Parker for his comments, because the overwhelming comments that I hear from the community are two things. One, has a decision been made? So I appreciate the affirmation that indeed has not. And the second one is the maturity factor, about 6th graders going up into the junior highs, and 9th graders going up into the high school. And there's tremendous concern there, a lot of it is what I consider to be centered on limited information, but I think that at the heart of this all is truly the communication process, as to how we're going to get it out, whatever it is we decide to do. And I do agree with Mr. Parker, the community has to rally around it.
Anybody else want to speak to that?
I have a question related to this, and on one of the slides and in the information that we've already received, they talked about some of the focus groups or informed surveys that were done, and the statement in here about moving, fewer than 50% of parents agree that acceleration could be accomplished without moving grades 6 and 9. And what I read in that is, when it got to the parents, which I think was listed as site councils in this information, there wasn't as much buy-in about the moving of 6th and 9th grade as there was on building leadership teams and the administrators. And that's part of the issue that we're talking about here. Would someone like to respond? And maybe that was just initial reaction to those things, not having heard all the different things that we've heard tonight, but that was something that stuck out to me in this information, that that's a pretty significant percentage who, that we don't think that's the right idea, if I've understood it correctly.
Many of those, I attended a focus group, and I would say 50%, the number of that, how that happened, I think by the end of the evening, though, a lot of those views had changed. To that, as a parent, as a parent myself of four children here, it is easier to me to hire a teacher to come in and teach the specialized math and reading. Once you get into the actual figures, though, is that actually what's right? Is that accessible for the community? Is that, you know, for the school, can we afford to do that? I don't think parents realize that information and understand those actual dollar figures. You know, I have 6th graders, too. I also think that children have to, and learn to adapt to where they are. I have two 6th graders. In an elementary school setting, they have to be the leader. I have 6th graders that are not. They're very immature, they're boys, but they have stepped up. Sorry. They are.
Whoa. It's a good thing you said that.
I have two girls, too, but by two boys, I'm sorry, they just aren't quite-
We do have the right to edit comments, I just wanted to-
They're just not quite the same. However, in 6th grade, now that they have that leadership role, they have really stepped up. And I have seen an immense improvement in just two and a half weeks, and especially one of my 6th graders, who is the less mature of the two. So I think when you're, they're put in that situation, they adapt, just like adults adapt in their situations. Moving 6th grade to the junior high setting is just going to, given a few weeks, as it's taken a few weeks to be a leader, they adapt to that and they learn that. But I think in these focus groups that we had with parents, it was just getting over that hump. I was the same way. I came into that focus group, my children will not, because it will affect my 6th graders if this were to happen as soon as possible, they'd be in the 9th grade setting, and there was no way I was going to let that happen. Once we started to go through these focus groups, I changed my mind, and I thought, for academic reasons, this has got to be where we go. We're not only competing with these benchmark districts, but it's other countries, and we can't, the way we are right now, we can't continue that way, so.
I would like-
I would like to add a comment to that. This is not a statistical, data-based comment that I'm making here. It's based on comments though, that I am receiving both from parents who have children who are not yet in sixth grade or ninth grade, and from parents like myself who have had children go through the sixth and the ninth grade. And basically what I'm seeing is that those parents like myself who've had kids go through sixth and ninth grade are pretty comfortable with this proposed change. And some of the task force members have addressed that very issue tonight. Those parents with children who haven't yet reached that grade level are more uncomfortable with this change. So I guess as a member of the Board of Education, I would ask all of us to be respectful of the opinions that we're hearing from parents whose kids have been in that situation and weigh that equally with the parents whose children have not been in that situation.
Thank you. Yes.
I would just like to add real quickly, last year I had an opportunity to work with the three sixth grade classes at Rolling Ridge. And it was on a project and I just, we took it and we ran it as a business. And as an adult, I kind of went in with the preconceived notion that, gosh, I'm going to have to end up doing most of this work myself because I don't think these kids have it. I was totally wrong. And I think as adults and as parents, we truly underestimate what our children are capable of doing. And so I agree that we have to be sensitive to the parent, but I think also with all the technology and all of the, the things that our young people are exposed to in today's world, that, that growth and moving can be communicated and positively. And I agree with Rita that we do, we, we try, when we do communicate it, we share our views as positive and why it's going to benefit it and not placing a judgment on someone that's really apprehensive about that, because that's going to kill the whole issue.
Good evening. I'm Tom Berry from Alathia East. I'd like to echo Rita's comments and make a couple of others. Certainly being the person who ran focus groups for parents at Alathia East and, and many parents over the last year or two, I really have not found a parent yet, once they get to Alathia East, that is against the idea of the ninth graders coming up to Alathia East. There may be some out there. I certainly didn't survey all of them, but I do want you to know that that's been my experience thus far in this process. I also in previous lives came from districts where the ninth grade was at high school and sixth grade was at middle school. I was a middle school principal and so it was my job and obligation to make sure that I acclimated those sixth graders to the, the middle school setting with those seventh and eighth graders. And certainly we took that responsibility very seriously, as I'm sure this district would as well. And certainly there were some, some tough times with some students that first few weeks coming to that, that middle school setting, but by the end of our first quarter, they were all very acclimated because our staff had done a tremendous job of helping them be acclimated, to be ready for that experience. We would also do that same thing at the ninth grade level, because in another previous life, I was at high schools where there were ninth grades, ninth graders at those, at those schools. And certainly it was a big responsibility there as well. But I know with our staff, with our commitment and our caring for kids, we could do that job. So just my two bits worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Berry. Mr. Gilmore again.
Yes.
Phil Clark, Alathia South, and also a former principal at Santa Fe Trail for 10 years. So the transition issue from six to seven and then nine to 10 are, are both things that I'm fairly acquainted with. I know one thing that has seemed obvious over time is that the folks that are most concerned about it are not the kids that are 12, nor the kids that are 15, but the kids that are 35 and 45. It truly is a matter of communication. Mr. Churchman mentioned that. Mr. Parker mentioned that. Ms. Ashley commented about the, the levels of understanding depending on where you have been. Have you had that experience as a parent that's had kids go through and then you realize that, that truly the transition does work? Something that I trust, that everybody realizes, is that the first year of the transition would be the most challenging for this community to accept. And something that I hope that everybody fully appreciates is that in that first year, two-thirds of the kids that go to the junior high will be walking into that junior high for the first time as students of that junior high. They will have been fifth and sixth graders together, transitioning at the same time to their new school. And with the ninth grade, one-half of the kids that enter that high school experience will be entering that high school experience for the first time. For me, it truly is about the fundamental premise of access. And I think it became very clear over time and the good people that are seated here and worked over, over a number of hours began to realize just how significant the difference could be for our kids, provided they had access. I mean, look at a few of those stats and, and the pre-algebra is a perfect example. Look at the number of kids that are attending Indian Trail Junior High that I know, I know are ready academically to participate in some of the programs at Alathia South High School. And yet, for several reasons, they don't walk across the parking lot. And it has to do with obstacles that the current system has in place for them. Now should this, and, and I do not envy your position, and certainly whatever the decision, we will work to make the very best of the situation, just as we have over time. But I do believe that the folks that have invested some time here over time have a clear vision as to what this could be, should the decision be to move the ninth grade up to the high school and the sixth grade up to the middle level or to the junior high. Thank you again for your efforts and overtime and for what you're about to do.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Okay.
Could we take one more comment? Would that be okay from Pam? Please.
I've also got a son who last year was in the pre-algebra program and is in the gifted program. And without going into a lot of personal detail about my child, I would have given anything for him to enter the junior high sooner. The first two weeks of junior high for my son have been better than the past three years.
Thank you for that, Pam. Other questions?
Okay. I, I hear you. But folks, we cannot make, we cannot expect to make, and I'm going to say it again, and Dr. All, I would like for you to comment on this now. We cannot make this decision in a vacuum and this is a vacuum. All right. My email, I won't be able to keep up with it if we, if we continue without having a plan and then executing that plan of going out to the community and talking with the community about this. Now, I, I saw the survey, the bond task force survey, how can we increase ninth grade student access to accelerated opportunities, et cetera? The question, move ninth graders to high school sites, site councils, 57%. Now, that's encouraging. I see BLTs and administrators are strongly in favor of this. This can't be a BLT or an administrative decision. It has to, this decision has to, has to come from the parents and from our taxpayers. And then the same thing on, on, on moving the sixth graders to junior high, same question, 52% of the site councils agreed with that. Folks, we've got to do better than that. So what I would like to suggest is that we would talk about how we could begin the education process of the community and take this on the road, out to the community, for the community to understand this and experience that, for those parents to, to come and listen to this and for our taxpayers to come and listen to this and to begin to understand that. Then go back and do another survey. I understand we're not going to get 100%. I don't need 100%, but I need more than 57 and 52.
Right. Could, Dr. Or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'd like to add a comment before Dr. All, you know.
Absolutely.
Comments? That's okay. And, and that is that along with this, this plan that we're talking about and conveying this, this vision to the community, we have talked.
Not a decision, this, this.
I said the vision.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. I thought I heard decision.
No. Vision. With a V.
With a V, all right.
We have talked about the academic rigor that we would like to be able to offer the students and the opportunities that we would like to offer the students. And we've almost exclusively talked about our top achieving students. We have a diverse student body. So I would appreciate it if several of you could comment on what this would mean to, let's just say, our middle of the road students. We, we have special programming for needy, special needs students, ELL students, et cetera. What does this mean for the students who make up that 75 to 80% of our student body? Is this a good deal for them?
Dr. All, can you perhaps respond to Mr. Parker and then we'll move to the community members just about communication? Because I think that's the second time that he's asked that and I think we should honor that.
I would like to, I would like to honor that too. I, I agree with Mr. Parker. I, I think when we look about this process, you know, this is about a process and it's, we have, tonight is not the end of the journey. Okay? It started a while back. It started with some concepts that needed to be taken a look at. There's obviously been very in-depth, thorough study, given the amount of time. Not that everything's been done. I think the task force would say that there were some things that they don't know in depth that maybe they would like. And they're also hoping that this, this is sort of the beginning of the, or the end of the first phase of this very important process. The task force has done some work here that helps move all of this forward in our understanding, both from the board's perspective and hopefully to begin that springboard for the community's communication. Because until you see it come together, even have a vision described here that could possibly result in multiple different decisions, we're, we're ready and prepared, I think, I would be and the staff would be, at the board's direction, to take another phase of this process. I think one step that we have planned is a special meeting in September, if we can get that scheduled, that would address growth, because I know there's been questions about just digging into that more deeply for board understanding. And obviously a time to process all the information tonight so that we can maybe craft a, a plan of communication, particularly if, if we're clear and, and it's made clear to me what we want to achieve there. But I think it would be incumbent upon us to take a look of the opportunities we have this fall on, on a basic level in addition to having, this task force had several months, this board's going to need minimally as much time as the task force had to, to grapple with this. And that during that time, we could, using board meetings, district site council that's coming up, where everybody's together, individual site council meetings, community forums, we have opportunities to go school by school. If it's decided that we, that this is important enough to communicate, I will commit my time. I know board members would. I've heard some community members tonight, I know there are staff members, to try to at least get the information out about why it would be even important to discuss this. Because I think that's been questioned at times about why we should even be discussing this. I can tell you, I've had some, you've got butterflies, I've had nightmares. And it, it would be easier not to deal with this. A lot easier. It would be much more comfortable not to look at this in depth. I think the informed decision-making process is what's critical here. If we do that information and have those discussions and get those concerns out, and if we can't get better than, than 50/50, then we probably should not go on. And if you want to direct me to work to educate this community in the fall and see if we can then come back out and do another survey with, you've got one benchmark to see whether that's been a change in this community's mind, once there's an opportunity for more discussion than just the individuals in this room, I believe that we can do that. And I don't think as a board, I could fairly, or the community could fairly ask this board to make a decision without doing our full due diligence. And I think that's a responsibility that staff are more than willing to, to make a commitment to. I, I think this question is important enough because if we, going this direction is a huge change process. It's huge. Not going has ramifications as well. If we decide not to go, we have to come back and really look at some other brutal facts seriously. And so I think the conversation in the end is going to be good for the school district. It's going to be great for the school district. Because we're going to be at a better place regardless of what the actual decision is in the end than when we started this process three or four months ago. That's what I believe. We'll be in a better place. If we're having to do some more creative out of the box ways to get access to kids that maybe don't satisfy 100%, we're going to be doing more than we were doing before. And if we can make this look viable and everybody that, that is involved has an opportunity to give input and be informed and we think this is the right direction, we're going to do better than we were before. And I think that's what we have to let, take this process step by step. And I don't think the board or any of, of this task force members want to be put in a corner or a box to say that we're going one direction or another. I think this is, again, to reiterate one more time, this is the first phase of a study process. I'm an educator, 38 years. I believe we're not too old to learn. And I believe that good information and good discussion and good dialogue and sincere work will bring a better outcome. And sometimes it takes time. The problem is we always don't have as much time as we would like, but we can take some time here. We don't, this isn't something we have to figure out in a week or two weeks. So I don't know if that helps, Mr. Parker, your thinking?
Well, Mr. Parker, when we first started too, when we did our focus groups, when we got together hundreds of people in a timeframe of two weeks, two and a half weeks tops, that was at the very beginning of this process. I mean, I know personally, I know a lot more about these issues than I did even at that point. So if we've convinced 40, 52% to go our way with town meetings, the press, us 90 plus those hundreds of other people that we have breached, I feel like if people are interested in the community, it will get out. The question about the ELL and the challenge learners, you know, I have two, well, my, three of my children attended Title I school, two of them receive services. You know, I feel my sixth grader that does receive services in a junior high setting could probably, because he has pulled out of classes, core content classes, to receive these special classes that he has to take. In a junior high setting, there are some additional electives, there's the core content. At the end of the day, they have the extra time built in for those extra needs. So I feel like in a junior high setting, my sixth grader wouldn't be pulled out of core content, which he is now. So just because he struggles in reading, should he be pulled out of math? Eventually he's going to struggle in math. So in a junior high setting, it is a little different. I think they have more time to focus on those things. So hopefully that. And to also have those role models, those peer models, you know, those kids, I work with children and disabilities for Alathia School District. And I think once, I see a lot of the junior high kids that are integrated into the classrooms, they, they seem to do a lot better because they have those peers to role model after and they have those extra choices, so.
Actually, I'd like to address two questions, Mr. Parker, and the question about the 50% piece. I think we need to remember that school site councils and those focus groups kind of came into that cold in that they came to a meeting to give their opinion, their input. They saw about a 45-minute PowerPoint presentation and, and if any of you were there to see that, Allison did a tremendous job, but she can talk really fast. And so she got a lot of information in a short period of time. And, and we did see some changes in, throughout the evening as questions were discussed. And it also looked a little bit different depending on which end of the continuum we started with those discussion questions, whether we first talked about the early childhood education and the kindergarten and then ended up with the high school, or if we started with the high school. So, so we saw some differences there. But, but I think, Ms. Ashley, your question about the, the middle of the road child or the average child, what benefits would this provide for them? Developmentally, sixth graders are ready for, for a configuration where they have some breaks during the day, where they have some choices in their curriculum. And whether they are the academically talented student or the student who needs some remediation, they're going to have opportunities in this change in configuration. They're going to have opportunities to, to be with peers who, as they are now, who are academically gifted, but they're also going to have some times where they're in classes where, where perhaps their focus is actually on that middle of the road child, because those academically gifted kids are in an advanced math class. And so, so in some ways, they'll have a little bit more attention. But they'll also have opportunities, as, as you could see from the comparison that was provided, and, and I'm speaking specifically to sixth grade, for, for more extension and more opportunities, more minutes in physical education, more opportunities in. more minutes in physical education, more opportunities in, with technology and international language, and some of those electives where, with art and a variety of, of experiences in family and consumer sciences, as well as some lab experiences in science, in an actual science lab. So the opportunities are not limited to one end of the continuum or the other as far as performance abilities with kids. I believe it, it creates an environment where sixth graders are going to flourish. And, and I'm going to share an example. Phil mentioned that the children who have, who seem to have the most difficulty with this are the 35 and 45-year-olds. Today Prairie Trail had their first home football game. And the bleachers were packed with seventh graders because, you know, after they figured out where the game was going to be played, which was kind of funny, where do we go for the football game? Well, where is the football field? And, and really, you know, we're across from Seaback and they really thought we were going to go over and play there. I don't think Seaback would have been pleased with all those junior high kids. But there was a parent who actually walked her seventh grade boy right up to the gate tonight. And he was ready. He had his PRT Husky Pride shirt on and, you know, he's walking about six feet ahead of mom and she's saying, "Now wait, now wait," and gets to the gate and she's, "Do you see your friend?" And, you know, he's left her in the dust. And, and she turned to me and she said, "This is so, so very hard to just let him spread his wings." And, you know, and there were several staff members there and we said, "We know, but, you know, look at all these kids and, and we're here to help them. And we have a cage around them here so they're not going to fly away." But it, it truly is. I think the communication piece, I think if, if you get, if, if we are given an opportunity for the educators who deal with this situation year after year after year, to talk to parents and to involve parents and recent parents who have just started in the junior high or, or high school, I, I think those numbers are going to go up.
Kathleen, I don't want to dampen the questioning about this issue. It's clear the sixth and ninth grade is kind of the major issue of what's been presented tonight. But at the same time, there are other things, lots of other things that have been presented here. And board members, I don't want to stop anybody from questions about that sixth and ninth grade issue, but I would like to know if there's anything outside of that that we want to ask while we have all these task force members here on another issue besides that.
I would, I'd like to-
Paul has a list right here, I can see it.
I'd like to talk about athletics for a moment.
Hey, Mr. Churchman.
And, you know, it really goes back to the access question, but I know there, there's a concern about athletics and, and I'll, I'll communicate it to you the way it's been communicated to me. We have feeder schools that feed high schools. And the concern is about limiting the ability for ninth graders to play sports. And then if you go up to the high school level, how have we compensated in the, in the estimate that we've seen here tonight for additional infrastructure, fields, coaching staffs, lockers, et cetera, et cetera? And I'd just like to have a little insight as to what we envision for that.
Okay, the impact on athletics. Would somebody like to take that from the task force? They're, they're, they're having a huddle back there. Mike, would you like to do that? That would be great. Thank you, Mike.
I have some thoughts on that that, that somewhat tie into the last discussion. And, and in the infrastructure committee, or whatever we were called, we, we focused greatly on having facilities that met the needs of the kids. Whether it was sixth grade classrooms with strange things like sixth graders in them or locker room big enough for all the kids. And that's where some of us got to, for example, the need for a sixth high school. Because we asked those questions. We said, "Okay, if we bump up all the freshmen to Olathe North and we have a band room for 75 and now we have 100, you can't just go to the band room and put room, 30% more room on it any more than you can go to the cafeteria and add 30% more seats and go to the locker room and add 30% more lockers." And some of us reached the conclusion that to have a school fitted to the kids, we just needed more schools that fit the number of kids. Because the alternative is to have four high schools that are bigger and add an addition to them. And, and my way of thinking, just merely my view, is that you end up with then that 30% of space in some addition over there that really is supposed to support those 30% of the band kids or lockers or lunchrooms or whatever it is. Clay turntables, you know, a million different things. And if the best decision for the kids academically is rearranging the grades, personally, I've kind of started out not caring about and have a strong opinion out, about now. If we ignore that and we spend $150 million spending new facilities that don't provide the optimum space for the kids, I'm going to feel like we did a disservice to the community. And, and so these, these issues are tied together. That we want the right facilities, that's what we proposed was the right facilities. And if the right educational structure is what's proposed, we want the facilities to match that too, rather than build facilities that are almost out of date the day we're building them.
I agree with that.
Did that address your question?
It, it does to a degree. I mean, another, another angle on that is, is we look at expanding four high schools and the physical space that that's going to take. And then we look at athletics and we could be talking about band as well, the same, same questions apply. And we bring a freshman team in, do, do we have space for additional fields? Are they being taken away by expansion to the schools? I mean, just logistically, how would that work? I'd certainly like to, to hear from our coaches as to what their view is, how they would handle that and, and how are we financially planning for additional coaching staff if that's the answer. But, you know, certainly the fine arts, band, athletics are, as we all know, very important to the education process as is the academia part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly the high school principals need to have a better feel for that same question because depending on how large our schools become, we want to provide safe and optimal areas for our students in those areas as well as the academics. So we had the opportunity to sit down with Greg Thomason from the Service Center and he gave us some ideas about what that would look like and what possible needs would be. I think the key part about what Greg told us is that might mean something different at each high school when the time came to make the additions necessary to work with the incoming ninth grade class and, and incorporate them into the high school situation. Because every school is a little bit different. They were built all in different times and thus the infrastructure needs might be a little different at one versus the other. And so that helped me to allay my fears a little bit that we aren't just going to add on this many classrooms and, and move on. We have all these other areas that also need to be put into place to make this a workable plant for nine through 12, depending on the number of students we have at those levels. I think a little more work needs to be done in regards to fields and all of that as well. Because, you know, I think you don't know exactly how many kids are going to get out for things, but I'm guessing it's going to be a lot, you know? So are we going to need to look at that, especially some of the schools have more ground and space than other schools do? So I think it's going to be a school-by-school look at what is needed and necessary. Plus you still have space at close junior highs in most situations that can still be possibly used as well if you need practice space and those types of things. So, so from our point of view, and I'm probably speaking for the principals a little bit and I see Phil coming up here. It really helped us to see it a little bit more clearly in kind of a concrete sequential manner. And, and it helped us a lot, so.
The other aspect, Dr. Berry, is also the, the playing time aspect. You know, are we taking a developmental quantity or a quantity of, of kids that can play and, and develop? And, and reducing that now because, you know, there's not room for what would have been three junior highs on one, you know, freshman team at a high school?
Depending on exactly what we decide with, what you do with those ninth grade teams, because I don't think we've got any decisions made there. I think it opens up possibilities, at least my experience in the past, those past lives I was talking about. It gives students opportunities at levels that they are most readily able to participate in. And especially if you look at things like our ninth grade basket, boys' basketball right now are not able, no matter what their level is, to come up and participate at a, say, a JV or even a varsity level, which they are able to do in other districts that we, against teams that we compete against. We, we quite often compete against freshmen at the, even in the varsity level because there are some students that are, that are physically ready to do that. So you are opening up that opportunity. As far as the opportunities that you maintain for all the kids at that level, it certainly be my hope as a principal that we continue to provide programs to help as many kids as possible to participate. Because I know that as a principal, when I have a student participating at my school, I've got them tied into my school. I've got them tied into the, the growth and the ideals and the good work that those coaches do with our kids.
Dr. Earl, did you want to?
We'll have to fill this right now.
You know, I think there's two questions and I appreciate the question. When we did have an opportunity a couple of days ago to sit down with Mr. Thomason and have him review, what are we talking about in terms of square footage? If we were to go to expanding the four high schools? And right now we're talking about roughly the size of an elementary school. You look at 500 kids and you, so you're talking somewhere around 68,000 square feet. What does that look like at Olathe South? And part of those decisions in terms of the configuration will depend on what the program needs are to drive those decisions. When we look at the freshmen currently, you know, we, we have a situation where the kids in Olathe, there's eight different teams, eight different schools, they play each other and that's pretty much their schedule. Well, we have a league affiliation and we know that there'd be opportunities for the freshmen and to compete against folks outside, outside of Olathe. And right now, I'm sure that each of the high school principals has commissioned one of the assistants, primarily the AD, to begin really exploring what does this mean? Drawing out some schedules so that we can better provide you with some information and also become a little more familiar with what will this mean given our space, given the facilities that are next door? You know, there's some challenges at Olathe South High School. We're sitting on 41 acres and, and how will that look in a facility design? The other thing in terms of program opportunity, I think you will begin to hear, I'm going to go back to the gender question. Physically, physically, you will probably see more females participating at the varsity level at, as, as freshmen. I mean, they just are physically more developed and there isn't that, that difference between the varsity athlete. Now, in football, for example, I don't see a lot of freshmen starting in the Sunflower League. You just don't see it. They're not physically there yet. Now, if you have a special kicker, you know, that has, has that particular skill, he may start all four years. But in the area of football, I don't know that that'll happen. On the girl's side of this equation, you'll see freshmen have opportunities to access levels of play that previously they've, they've, they've experienced some limitations. Those are some of the things that we're going to have to explore, Mr. Churchman. And I, and I do believe, I do believe the, the good people, we're going, we're going to give that question due diligence to. And, and again, it's helpful to kind of understand what would it look like? Because the first questions that come up within our, within our buildings are, "How are we going to make this work?" Well, the question is, "Why should we make it work?" And if we reach that in the affirmative, then we'll find a way to make it work. And, and what will that mean in terms of facilities? It's going to look different at Olathe East, who's sitting on what, 87 acres, I think it is? Now, now I'm whining a little bit. And Olathe Northwest, which blueprints are already in place. And Olathe North, which has a little more acreage too. So it'll, it'll look different. We recognize that. And those are the questions that we need to, now that we've done a, a rather, yeah, I see you, Mike. He's playing his violin. I, I do think that a lot of our focus has been on, "Why should we make this recommendation to the board?" And have we reached that position where we're comfortable saying there's no question in our mind that academically and, and access-wise for a number of different reasons, we say yes. Now we look at, "How do you make it work in the event that we go this direction?" Not that we haven't looked at it already. And, and folks like Greg Thomason and, and others that have had that be their focal point are really in a better position to, to guide us as we tie the two things together. Program, facility needs, and, and we'll make it work.
One thing I might add on, on the sports, we have to remember, most of our ninth graders are already playing at the high school in those sports that we don't offer at the junior high. The issue I think that you're probably referring to, that I'm familiar with a little bit, would be the football question. Volleyball is the only other sport in the fall and that's for girls. Then in the wintertime at the junior high, it's girls' basketball and boys' basketball. And in the spring, there's a track program. All other freshman sports, baseball, softball, cross-country, swimming, wrestling, and on and on. Soccer, boys and girls, fall and spring, are already at the high school. The fields are there. So I think the issue, when it comes right down, and just in my talking with some coaches, it's going to come down to how are we managing the football switch? Because that's, that's a, a big issue. But it, it does have opportunities there that I think would have to be thought through to make sure that we're helping kids there and keeping that participation up. But in the other areas, I think there is a limited number that, that we could accommodate that through that setting. But the football is the one that, that sticks out a little bit.
Good. Yes, Flint?
I'm sorry, I know it's late. I've been writing down a lot of notes. Bear with me, I just kind of got to get some of this off my chest because I'm here. And I have the platform, I guess, so. Several things I want to address. First of all, the, the middle issue that Rita had. You know, I think regardless of what the numbers are, you're always going to have a top, you're always going to have a bottom and you're always going to have a middle. You know, you're never going to get everyone to the same place. I think if you raise the top and raise the bottom, the middle's going to have to drift up if nothing else along with that. It's just there's no, there's no way that wouldn't happen that I can see. You know, it's easy to say, "We're above the state average." Isn't that good enough? And, you know, it's easier to say, "Look where we are." And it's not like we're a horrible district, we're a great district. But when you look at our neighboring districts, we just don't quite measure up to the opportunities for the future for a lot of these kids. And I, I mean, you know, I feel like we're trying to hammer you over the head with this. I thought we'd be preaching to the choir almost. But, you know, I, I understand we've had longer to assimilate this data. And, you know, for us, you know, it's hard to imagine anyone not agreeing with this on the premise. You know, the premise of that it's better, I understand.
I'll have you come check my email tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
You'll be forwarding those?
The, the premise of what we're trying to do, you know, we're trying to improve the educational opportunities for the kids. You know, in my mind, that's a no-brainer. The issue is, as you say, how do we get support? And, you know, it's a tough issue, obviously. We talked about it a lot. We were all willing to be part of focus groups. But even if we do that, you know, we could convert 100% of the BLT and even the parents in the focus groups. You know, the, you know, you know, I work at schools all the time. There's a very small segment of parents who even attend these meetings. I mean, we could get 100% acceptance there, but all these other parents have to be educated. I, I mentioned before, we, we can't just throw it out, that we have to inform them. And, you know, there's a lot of possibilities. Certainly we can, as we do that, we can try to convert more people, you know, and then spread it out. You know, the, the focus group, the 50% you got was from one hour. All these people came in there, for the most part, adamant, "No." You know, and within one hour, over 50% were at, almost equally adamant, "Yeah, we have to do this." You know, and that was after one hour. You know, we obviously have had all this time. I mean, and I'm sorry, I know I'm rambling here. I kind of tried to write notes and I can't even read half of what I wrote. You know, I don't know what the percentage of, even if we converted every single parent, every, everyone in this district, you know, in this whole voting community that has a kid in school, what, I don't know the demographics, what percent of that is even, you know, of the total voting, voters? You know, parents? I don't know. But I would think the more word we could get out, the more they could get the word out, get the message across. And I know it's hard. I had one thought, and I'm just rambling again, I know. I don't even know if it's legally we can do this. Could we do email campaigns? We have everybody's, you know, we, we do school directories. We have every email, not you to receive emails, from the district. Giving information. The question is, how do we educate these voters? You know, we obviously can't afford to do TV spots like, you know, or, or mass mailings, but email would be free if we can do that. Email as many people as possible, get the word out. I mean, just a thought. There's always going to be a vocal segment of population that insists, "No new taxes, I don't care what." You know, "I don't care about the schools. I have no students in the school." There's always going to be that, you know? I think the risk, we talked about ramifications, if we don't do this, you know, I think we're running a risk of losing people. I mean, I can see, now, especially that if we start informing people, they see these numbers and then they say, "Well, we're not going to do anything about it." You know, move to Blue Valley so your kid has opportunities. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I would espouse that, but I can see that possibly happening. If we address these concerns, and I understand there's a timeframe. I'm not saying we have to get it addressed right away. We have to have this education process. But, you know, I think that's a definite concern. If we don't do something after seeing this data, if we just throw it out there and say, "It's a problem, but we're better than state average." it's a problem, but we're better than state average, that's the best we can do, I think we're going to lose some people. I mean, you know, we moved here in 1990 because of the school district, the reputation of the district, and admittedly, we pretty much just looked at elementary because, you know, we talk, and I'm rambling, I'm sorry. As you get through these levels, you know, we talked about, like Rita said, that the older parents who have been through it, they have no problem with this. It's the parents of the younger kid, well, not no problem, you know, they have, everyone has issues, but it's the parents of the younger kids that don't understand that it's, you know, it's the parents that have the issue. The kids will be fine. The kids want it, for the most part, you know. No, I'm sorry. We moved here mainly for the school district, and I can see people doing the same thing. If they start seeing this, they might move somewhere else. And as one last thing, my last one, I promise. This issue is all emotion. It's, you know, the moving of the grades up, the stumbling block is the emotion of getting approval of the votes because it's not a financial decision. As I mentioned, it's $60 million to build on the high schools, but it's going to be almost that much if we don't do that, to build on all the elementary schools for the space we're not creating for the move. So I want to make sure you understand it. It's not a financial decision, the move. You know, obviously, all the deferred maintenance, the huge dollars we're talking about for, you know, everything else, and the new high school, which has to be done, that's, you know, that's huge dollars, but that's there, and you can't avoid that. But the actual move, the costs are negligible, as far as dollars. It's all the emotion and getting the support to, for the voters.
Great. Thank you, Flint. I think, Ms. Gema, no, 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 Mr. Gema, over to you. I know we're approaching nine o'clock, and maybe back to any other questions from the board.
Well, and as we, we didn't have a set time to stop this meeting, but I know we do want to take advantage of all the people being here. So again, I'll ask the question I asked earlier. Is there something, you know, besides the sixth and ninth grade issue inside of all this information? There's a lot of people here on technology and all those kinds of things that we can ask tonight. I know we're going to come up with a lot of questions between now and the next time we meet, and we'll, it's one of the purposes of having that meeting, is making sure we get those questions on the table.
I do have a technology question. I appreciate you prompting that. Our technology plan, our five-year plan, if I recollect, was at a price tag of 25 million? Is that correct?
I don't have it in front of me, but I think that's right.
Okay. So the question I have is, and you don't have to answer it tonight if we don't have it, but I'd be interested in knowing, I saw a price tag of 27 million roughly in the aggregate here. How much of that 25 million have we already moved forward and committed to? And so what would the delta be? And then what's the difference between that and the 27 million?
I would have to get you those exact figures. I don't want to speak out tonight on some figures that aren't accurate, so I'd have to get you those exact figures.
Okay, good.
But we are moving forward with some of the technology that's on the list for the bond. We are continuing to move forward and doing some of that right now as we speak with capital outlay dollars. So as we move forward with that, it does change that figure a little bit.
And so an overview in the future as to where are we on the walk of the 25 million, and then what is the bond package trying to either accelerate or supplement or that kind of thing?
I can get you those figures.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Other questions? Yes, Mr. Parker.
This is probably more for Dr. All and staff. One of the four findings, the third finding, equity in aging facilities, Central Ridgeview issue. The task force recommends the district investigate innovative solutions to provide appropriate and functional space for students. So I think we need to honor that. No, we do need to honor that, no thinking about that, and we need to start talking about what kind of options there are in that area.
I think, Linda was principal at one of those schools, I think there's been some preliminary discussion. More recently, I've become a little more directly involved in visiting Central and trying to help with some immediate needs there, that we're going to have to look at a variety of options. And I think the short term at Central is, they're crowded now. Oh, seven, two more classrooms are needed, there's no space for them, and that's not a long-term solution. So then when we come back and we look at a variety of options, you know, are there boundary changes? Well, I think in a quick look, the schools around Central are at capacity or growing. So that doesn't mean that there can't be some further digging in that particular area. Secondly, there are issues that were identified by the task force. Some of those schools are old and were built under different codes. I've talked to Greg again, you know, it may take something creative with our city to say, what could you work with this on in that original town discussion? Is there, are there ways that we could get some support through looking at some of that existing schools creatively? It's probably going to be a little more expensive per square foot because those schools weren't designed to have the add-on additions like many of our newer schools are. I think you have to decide philosophically, do you want to keep the smaller schools? Those are an operational issue, and yet at the same time, a lot of the kids at Central and Ridgeview walk to and from school, that's the only way they get to school. So if you move a school farther away and they can't get access, that becomes an issue. It's not an easy solution. But I think we do have to start on that, and that's one thing I would like to start on and actually come back and talk more specifically to the board about this fall because there are some immediate issues, there may be some temporary issues that we need to address there while we're trying to seek that long-term solution. So I would be more than happy to come back to the board with some additional thinking and specificity on that of some options.
Dr. All, I believe, excuse me, I believe, and we've talked about it before, that one of the very first steps this board needs to take as we start to lay the foundation for this decision is a very detailed, school-by-school growth analysis and understand what all the options are, whether there are boundary changes. Not to say that's what we're going to recommend, but that we need to really understand that in detail.
And I, and I am, we are, I think we're pretty close with our ballot scorecard on the hotspot areas of growth and then an individual school profile to start that growth notebook for you. And when we get that meeting scheduled in September, I think the first part of that meeting is really to review all of the growth issues, particularly in areas that maybe it's not as obvious, you know, at first look, and that view, school by school, and maybe talk through that. And so I think that's our step number one, but why we're maybe doing a couple other steps at the same times.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. And that was a question that I had, because there are actually, the task force has identified five schools in addition to Central and Ridgeview that they've answered no to on construction feasibility, which is addition needed now, and the answers are yes, and yet the answer and the other cons are no, the construction feasibility is not there. So that probably does have to be looked at. And we can work with Mr. Thomason, there I see him. We can come back and kind of look at those five schools as a group, maybe, and I think, when you take 43 schools, you know, it's overwhelming. And I think the task force divided the school district in four quadrants so that you could get a handle on at least one particular area, and they walked the schools. And I think if we take those five, that's the helpful part of this, they've identified five, we can study that more in depth now, look at what, it may not have met the feasibility criteria, but there might be some parts of that that are more feasible than others that we can start tweaking and working with. So that's the helpful thing of having that isolated, to come back as staff now to you and say, okay, they've surfaced this, now let's just take a look at that, and then you can understand that chunk, and we can understand that chunk and get some direction on it. So I think those are very appropriate and important kinds of things to move forward on, and we can do that.
One other aspect I'd like to recommend, it was interesting that KSB keeps quite a bit of data on bond offerings across the state of Kansas, those that have been successful, those that have been failures. And it was surprising to me to see the number of them that have not passed. The reasons behind it, I don't know, but I think it would be helpful to do some due diligence on that and gather some lessons learned behind. If those districts had to do it all over again, what would they do differently, or what were some of their points of failure? So we can learn from what some of their experiences have been.
I think one of the things that, being a little familiar with parts of Kansas, I think we can do that. One of the things in Alethe, we've also got pretty good track record as a growing district of what we've looked at, what recently has happened in this immediate Johnson County area, which may have some different demographics in other parts of the state. But at the same time, when you come back and looking at this, the 340-some million dollars worth of needs, whatever Mr. McVeigh identified there, some of those, remember, we talked about, we're trying to chip away at some of those with capital outlay. You don't build schools out of capital outlay, but we might be able to chip away at a significant portion of that technology over the three years while we're talking about, you know, all these things. And if we have the vision, and then we say, well, that becomes a priority here with that, with those dollars. But there's probably a part of the equity piece of getting it out to the schools fast, it's going to take part of the bond money, but it may not take 27 million. And I think one of the things we have to do, which we've not done as staff, is come back and say, what, how much can we accomplish, and start trimming away and bringing that down because it's going to, it's going to need to come down. And then the second thing, before we get too focused on the total, is that it does begin, all these other variables, and there's a presentation in here, you know, of how long this goes forward, what your issuance is each year, and what the assessed valuation is, what the interest rates are, how long we bonded out. So that's all going to be part of the crafting of this, once we decide what is, that the board would like to achieve, and then what can we do to put this in some package scenarios for you that you can get your arms around financially and have the implications.
Dr. All, you know, one thing you said there kind of gives me start, you said, what does the board want to achieve? It's what the community wants to achieve, I don't need to be critical. And this has to be a grassroots decision. It can't be a top-down decision. We can't make this decision. This decision has to be made in the community. And Mr. Churchman, to what you stated, whenever I talked to other board members where their bond was not successful, it was not successful because the administration and the board did not involve the community in the decision-making process. The stakeholders were not committed, and if we're going to be successful, even if we, whatever we decide, we got to make sure that it's out in the community, and I'm going to keep saying that, it's out in the community, and we're doing a good job of that education process with the community in order for them to understand what we're asking them to support.
One thing I might mention, one start of our community is a bond task force, and I think that is, it's that first step. It's not the last step, it's the first step. And so if it's the last step, it won't be enough. And so I think we, I think we're on the same page. Some districts don't take that first step. And so we've taken that first step, we have a few more to go. We're not, it looks, you know, we may be preaching to the choir for a lot of people in here, but it is that informed citizen with children, without children, in schools that at least needs an opportunity to understand why we would be talking about this and what it would bring and what the costs would be. I mean, that is the transparency that we've got to achieve as we move forward. One other thought about that, and I know that we're talking about the bond task force they brought before us, a large amount of money. However, I hate, would hate for us to look at that, and when we look at the needs of existing facilities, we're looking at now, we're looking at three years from now. I'd like to think that we're going to develop a timeline that will give us, over a long period of time, meeting some of these needs and that we're certainly cognizant of the costs of, but that we're also aware of, I think one of the task force members talked about a district and a vision for their future, not just our students, but our whole district. And so that we are planning for not just now and three years from now, but that we have that planned out for a long period of time so that we're addressing all of the needs that look like a huge amount of needs now, but obviously, this task force has thought into the future, and we need to consider that, too.
Ms. Pollin?
If you could indulge me for just a little bit. I learn an awful lot just from listening to conversations, so I appreciate the input we've had from everybody. I do want to also take this opportunity to thank everybody on the bond task force for the tremendous amount of work you did. I've been to a lot of meetings, I've been to all of them that you guys were at, but I saw the work you put behind them and the sincere, sincere effort you all put into it. And it's just amazing to me, the response from this community. Couple issues, you know, people recognizing their involvement in the community, I'll just share a little bit. You know, I was born and raised in Alethe, my wife is born and raised in Alethe, we raised four boys in Alethe, and I'm smart enough that after they've all graduated, I get on the school board. So my commitment to this community, I think, hopefully speaks for itself, and I just am so proud of this school district. You know, one of the things I see in Mr. Oswald, I think addressed it a little bit, thought you'd be preaching to the choir. Well, I think possibly, some of the comments I've heard here and everything like that, maybe that's what we are doing, is preaching to the choir. I've heard comments, and, you know, any comments I'm making here is basically because I want to dissect the information you've given me, okay? And questions I'm going to ask is not trying to belittle or anything, it's just, I want to, you know, if we're going to take this to community, these are the questions I think we need to have answered. So pardon me if I, if I'm not always politically correct with the way I ask questions, so that's sometimes why I stand back, because I don't know how to ask them correctly. But they're not meant to be derogatory or insulting to anybody, they're just meant to dig in deeper and get questions answered, so. But as far as preaching to the choir, what I sat back here and listened to is, number one, we talked about the desire for the advanced placement, the desire for, you know, the moving the kids up. We heard from parents here, and just about everybody we heard from were parents of kids that were high achievers, okay? We're talking about, most of what we've talked about today is way of elevating, and this is what I heard, okay? Accelerating the upper 10%, assuming that we will get the rest of them to come up with them, okay? I haven't heard from any parents tonight of just, quote, average students, and what we're going to do, you know, how they feel about moving the sixth grade, moving the ninth grade up, okay? If we're going to, if we're going to be taking this to the community, those are the people we need to have asked questions answered, too. And typically, with any group like the bond task force, who do you get involved? You get the parents of high achievers involved, and that's who we've got, okay? But there's 80% of the other people, okay, that we still need to address and make sure that we've gotten their input, okay, so that we can take this and feel that we have sold it to the community, or not sold it to the community, address the needs of the community. You know, I look at the situation at Alethe right now, my goodness, do we have anything to be ashamed of? We're the envy of the state from our school district. You know, I've heard somebody say that the Sunflower League really doesn't want us in the league because we're too high achieving for them. What a wonderful problem we got. We don't have, we don't have the problem of going from good to great, I think we got the problem from going from great to even greater. And so any decision we make, I think everybody in the room needs to understand that we've got the kids' mind, you know, best interest in mind. It may not be what the bond task force recommended, but we're going to be digging down and trying to find out, but anything that's made, you know good and well that we're going to find a way of accelerating the learning of the kids. You know, if the upper 10% is what we've addressed right now, and, you know, like I said, that's what I'm sitting here hearing, do we take a look at, okay, programs, you know, we have ELL reading teachers, we have Title I reading, we have Title I math teachers, do we address the upper 10% in a different way than we do the other 80%, okay? So enough said, these are just questions I've got in my mind and things that I would need to have answered to move forward. So I appreciate you indulging me.
Thank you, Mr. Pollin. I wonder if there are members from the task force that would like to address the issue of, yes, Susan, thank you.
I am Susan Brooks, I have a senior in high school, and I have an eighth grader. I don't have the top 1% student, but there are statistics, because I asked Mrs. Ban, Dr. Banakowski this question, because it is, you are talking to a bigger amount of people, and there are just as many statistics that do say that. I think Flint just kind of said it in one sentence about moving up, because he's seen all the statistics that says that that will happen with your 80% student will move up a little bit, and your 90%. Because the way the district is now, we can't afford to bring our Quest students, I think, are the 99 percentile, and I'm not real sure. So that you have these 97 percentile, the 95 percentile kids that can take these extra challenges. Then you have the kids that are 80 percentile, who can then move up to the 87, 90 percentile. So again, it was an emotional decision for me also. I moved back to the district because of junior high. You know that I ran on that, I said, I love the junior high system. Well, just that I ran on that, I said, I love the junior high system. Well, just hearing a couple statistics that broaden my education of the issue, the merit scholars, the administrators and staff who want to move these children up, who say they're ready, they're the ones spending all day with them. I'm not. But yeah, I have average students that I think it would be great to have these opportunities. Unfortunately, if this goes right away, I'll have a junior in high school, so it really won't affect him. So I'm in this for those other kids. I'm in this for Alatha's future, which is bright.
Thank you, Susan.
Also, with those kids, you talked about the parents that are here, that are in that higher percentile, their parents are here and they're going to be involved. A lot of parents, myself included, my children are not high achievers, I am involved because I want to know what programs I can push my child to do. If my sixth graders were in the junior high setting, they would be more aware of programs that are offered to them, such as leadership roles, as advanced classes, they would see other people taking those. I think that would, since parents now have to kind of be in the know about those programs and provide those transportations and those, you know, different schedules, I think if they were in that setting, it's kind of already there for them. They don't have to be, the parents don't have to commit as much as the kids do. You know, that's why I'm involved, so that I know what's available to my child. But if they were in that setting, it kind of already be there for them. So, to help.
Thank you. Jane?
I did speak earlier on the acceleration, because I did have a student who was accelerated quite well by the Alatha district. But my passion is the struggling child. That's what I've volunteered with in the Alatha district for, I don't know, 15, 16 years at all levels, elementary, junior high, and high school. Because all of our village's children are what I'm concerned about. My children will be out of the school district in another two years, so this really doesn't concern me personally. But I am very concerned about those struggling children. And if I had a sixth grade student who is struggling in reading, which is why I started to come up earlier, Linda, I would much rather have them in the junior high setting than the elementary. Some of our elementary schools do have reading specialists, but many of them do not. So they get so many hours of reading, or so many minutes of reading, but it's in a classroom setting. It's not individualized if they don't have a reading specialist. If they're a struggling reader and that they're junior high, they have their regular class, but they're also in a learning resource class. And they can be in a reading class, because all of our junior highs have reading classes. So we have more things at the junior high level that these children can get to. From a learning resource standpoint, our children are being pulled out of, like they say, the core subjects that maybe that's the only one they're excelling in, but it's when the learning resource teacher can get a hold of that elementary student. So at the junior high level, they have a learning resource class, they go to it every day at the same time, and they're getting support for all their services. We are stretching our learning resource teachers, asking them to supplement all of our children in all of their subjects from kindergarten to sixth grade. At the junior high, we have learning resource teachers that can specialize in a specific grade level. They don't have to know as many things. I would very much, if I had a struggling child, and I've helped these children, I know what their struggles are, have them in a junior high setting than in elementary school. This very much addresses those children just as much as the rest. And just like they say, as far as the average students are concerned, my child was very much served by the Alatha district. I didn't fight for anything. People always came forward and offered suggestions and help, and it was wonderful. He had an IEP. But there's a lot of kids that don't have IEPs, that are high achieving students, they just don't have the scores to make them Quest students. They don't have IEPs, and they can't get into these accelerated things that kids with IEPs can get into. Those are our average children, and we need to offer them, from an equity standpoint, all of the rest of the opportunities that we're offering some of these gifted kids, because a lot of them are self-motivated enough to do it, they just don't have the scores.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please do.
Thank you, Larry.
Since I'm one of the average children, and I mean that seriously, I need to read something from the findings that we might have brushed over, but I know that Dr. Berry mentioned it, and Jim McMullin, but when we look at greater alignment with current curriculum standards and instructional materials, because the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade configuration is nationally the most common, that addresses bringing everybody up. We're not just talking about the higher end, or we've, our district does a wonderful job with special needs students, but it's bringing, raising the bar for everybody. And the part that I won't read, because I've excelled a little bit past average, is our district staff, administrative staff, has trained the principals and assistant principals and educators on all the issues of closing the achievement gap, developing professional learning communities, that looks at every single child in these groups. And they didn't ask us last year, will you develop professional learning communities and make it work? They said, how are you going to do this? They didn't ask us, will you do extended learning for those students that do need some targeted help? They said, how are you going to do this? And they provided help and support and training for that. That's going to continue? Believe me, I've worked here for a long time now, and our work doesn't get easier, it's very challenging. But we've been working with our school faculty at all buildings, building levels, on bringing everybody up. We really focus on every child. And I think this move aligns everything perfectly to bring everybody up. And I do believe if you bring the upper level kids up, I agree with Flint, I don't know if they filter up, they will bring up, they will come up. And I think that's all I need to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Larry. Yes, Mr. Gilmore?
It's 9:30, and I think we need to bring this to a close.
Great. Over to you.
I'm going to officially end our question session. Dr. Drummond, we've not heard from you yet tonight.
No, you haven't.
Would you like to, I'll give you the opportunity, which you richly deserve, my friend, so why don't you go ahead?
Well, I just, I'll save my comments and questions for a later time. I think a lot of my questions have been already asked. But I just want to say, the group out here is just an incredible job. This is either my fifth or sixth time that we've been through a bond issue since, I'm the fossil on the board. So I've been through a lot of these bond issues, and have received a lot of bond task force reports across the last 18 years. But none is extensive, none is comprehensive, none is far-reaching as the report you've done. It's just absolutely outstanding. And I really do mean that sincerely. Again, I have a whole stack of them back in my office somewhere, unless my wife is throwing them out. But you've just done an outstanding job, and you've done it in a short period of time. We wish there could have been more time for you to delve into this, but circumstances such as they are, there hasn't been. But the amount of information you put together and the way you put it together is just as professional as you could ever hope to receive as a board member. Just outstanding. And I think you need to give yourself a hand for the community. I think the community needs to understand that, that as we are, you are volunteers, too. You didn't get paid to do this, you didn't get paid to go to early morning meetings, or stay late at night and do the different things you did, and do other things outside of your meetings. But you did it because of your commitment to the community. And I just want to affirm you for that, and thank you for that, because it's really going to help us to come to the best decision we possibly can. There's a lot of tentacles to this, and it's going to take us some time, it's going to take me some time, to work through all these tentacles. But we wouldn't, as a board, I don't think have the real notion to be able to do it in a complete way without all the work you've done. And we will take this, I'm sure, and turn it upside down and inside out, and look at it, and absorb it, and ask more questions, and try and digest it. But we couldn't do it the right way without the work you've done. And I suspect, responding to a couple questions about communication, again, having been through five bond issues, we can communicate to the public pretty well, we know how to do that. On things like this, 73 percent passage on the last bond issue, if I remember correctly, we can't ever assume anything. But with your help, I think we can get the word out to the public regarding what the issues are and what are some of the solutions and resolutions of some of the challenges we have. And I think we'll do that and do that well, and then the public will speak. So again, thank you for your hard work and your great insight, and I really deeply appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Drummond. We are planning, board members, to schedule a end of September, third week in September, special board meeting to further get into this information. I know that Dr. All is still trying to find the date that works for everybody, and we'll be contacted about that. Or do we need to set that tonight?
You'll need to set it at your regular meeting.
We'll set it at the regular meeting, we can't do that tonight.
But we're continuing to give you some options. It's challenging.
One of the things that we, to make that-
One of those challenging tentacles.
Yeah. I think in order to make that meeting as productive as possible, we need to collectively, individually gather our thoughts and collectively communicate them to Dr. All so that she and I can begin to work on an agenda for that meeting. So give that, your attention, please, between now and next week or two, and communicate that to Dr. All as best you can. I want to echo everything that Dr. Drummond just said to the task force members. I think the only flaw in your report is this 134 hours is a little short. It's very well done. You've given us, we are going to study this very hard. We commit to you that we're going to do that as a board, that's our responsibility. And we can, as a district, we can either react to the growth that's coming our way, or we can be forward-thinking and planning, which is what you're helping us attempt to do here. And we take that responsibility very seriously. And so with that, we're adjourned for this evening, board members. Thanks, everybody, for your time tonight, and have a good evening.